Members, staff and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the presentation for each agenda item before the Board discussion. Tonight, we will begin a discussion about Plan B and transitioning back to our school buildings. We will hear a presentation from the ABC Science Collaborative, receive and discuss a recommendation from our Metrics Monitoring Task Force, review family and teacher survey data, and discuss OCS readiness for Plan B. Tomorrow evening at 5:00, we will have another meeting where we will reconvene to review options for Plan B and have a more robust discussion about the options. The Board has been digging deep to really understand the impact of the decision we'll be making this week. As we consider our individual roles in helping to meet the needs of every student and family in our district during this incredibly challenging situation, we will have a moment of silence before we begin our work. Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Smiley, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Okay, we have adopted tonight's agenda. We need to adopt the consent agenda next, but we have a public comment, I believe, so I'll ask Ms. Stowe to recognize that speaker. This speaker will have three minutes, and after that, we will move forward with our consent agenda adoption.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. The speaker is Abby Castro. Could you unmute her?
I didn't get your name. You cut out.
Abby Castro.
And can I just remind everyone who's a panelist to please mute if they're not speaking? Thank you.
She is unmuted.
Ms. Castro? Jo, she's still, she might have muted herself. Okay, we can follow back up. As I've mentioned, Madam Chair, some folks sat down and inadvertently sat up to speak as well.
Okay, very good. Ms. Castro, if you would like to comment later, send us a message and we will honor you later in the meeting. So with that, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Howser. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes. We have unanimously approved the consent agenda. The first item on our agenda tonight is consideration for opening schools for hybrid and person and remote learning under Plan B. I will turn it over to Dr. Felder. I'd like to remind everyone that we will have a series of presentations, and then we have a few public speakers before the Board will engage in a full conversation, although we might ask small questions along the way. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, Board members, all guests and staff. On July 20th, the Board determined it was best to reopen schools under Plan C, all remote learning for the first nine weeks of school, based on the data and information available at that time. We have reached that juncture in the school year where the Board will assess where we are in order to make decisions about the path forward. To that end, tonight and tomorrow night, the Board will be provided with information to assist with the decision-making process. Tonight, the Board will have an opportunity to receive information from the ABC Science Collaborative, represented by Dr. Danny Benjamin, Kaiser Arena Distinguished Professor of Pediatrics, Duke University, Chair Pediatric Trials Network, and Deputy Director, Duke Clinical Research Institute. Staff will share results from two surveys administered last week to all staff and families. The Board will also hear information from the Metrics Monitoring Task Force. Presenting with staff will be Ms. Rebecca Crawford, the Orange County Health Department Deputy Area Commander, and joining her is Ms. Quintana Stewart, Director of the Orange County Health Department. Lastly, tonight, staff will present the district's Plan B metrics readiness matrix. That's a mouthful. The purpose of this matrix is to monitor the district's readiness for transition to Plan B. I've introduced Dr. Danny Benjamin, but before I turn things over to him, I want to say just a few words about the ABC Collaborative that he and his colleagues are leading. The ABC Science Collaborative pairs scientists and physicians with school and community leaders to help them understand the most current and relevant data about COVID-19 so that we can make decisions that will help keep teachers, staff, and children safe if and when they return to the classroom. Orange County Schools is grateful to be part of this engaging and informative learning collaborative, along with Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools, Wake County School System, Durham Public Schools, and now over 50 other school districts throughout North Carolina. The ABC Science Collaborative hosts weekly Wednesday webinars for district staff. Topics have included masks, air and surfaces, children with special needs, and the flu. This week's webinar will focus on responses to questions received from teachers and staff. So without further ado, at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Benjamin.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Two quick items for the chair or the organizer. One is that I do have clinical responsibilities this evening. If I have to take a page, I'll just, I'll just need to do that. Also, it's probably best, if there are questions about the Science Collaborative, that we get, take care of those right after I present, because the likelihood of me going an hour or an hour and a half without a clinical page is unlikely.
Certainly understand, and we will definitely do that. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, ma'am. The second thing is I've been having trouble with internet today. If that happens, if you just wave at me or text me in the comments box or what have you, and I'll turn off my video to allow for the Board and the public to hear me better. Next slide, please. Just, I like to start these off by saying a few things that we are not. We are, although we are expert in research, we are not K through 12 educators, and we do not give educators who have more expertise than us, the K through 12, advice on how they should be conducting their business, such as, did they go to Plan B, or should they go to Plan A, or how should they go to Plan B, those details around education. But rather, our goal is to educate families, teachers, staff, boards, school leadership around COVID-19 so that informed decisions can be made by folks qualified to make those decisions. Go ahead, next slide, please. We're also not the Health Department. Those folks have a mandate and expertise that we're not going to bring to the table. So if there are questions that relate to the Health Department scope of work, I won't be treading on that nor on Department of Health and Human Services for the state of North Carolina. So, as Dr. Felder mentioned, this is a partnership between Duke, UNC, several other academic medical centers throughout the country. Orange County was our second school district to come on board. Thank you all for doing that, and have been intimately involved in participating. It's been a real pleasure working with you all. There are 50 school districts from the state of North Carolina. We're now expanding it throughout the country. It is a National Institute of Health-funded project. It has three aims: education, as described, data relates to the, some items around symptom tracking that folks are, or school districts are required to do in some states and in some locales around making sure students are safe and teachers are safe to actually enter the schools. We're developing that with our technology partners. And then the third item is research questions that are focused within the research. For example, do the addition of webinars for teachers make them more or less comfortable to teach in the public school face-to-face setting? Do webinars make parents more likely or not to have their children receive face-to-face instruction, practical items for work at school? Now, the part of the education focus is not only on parents and staff at the schools, but also for superintendents so that they can be equipped with how to read the peer reviewed literature, how to interpret the peer-reviewed literature, sifting through the wheat from the chaff, if you will, in the peer-reviewed literature around the science so that they can make informed recommendations for their boards. I'm going to give you an extremely brief example of that tonight so that the school Board has insight into, as she makes recommendations to you. Go ahead, next slide, please. And then after that, I can take some lessons learned and some questions. Go ahead, next slide, please. So, the first example is from an overnight camp in Georgia. This camp started in the middle of June. You may remember this summer, there was some speculation that children, young children in particular, did not transmit COVID-19. And this camp started in the middle of June. It had an orientation for 138 trainees and 120 staff members. It was much like a public high school, if you will, where the median age was 17 with a range of 14 to 59 years. At this point in the camp, there was limited cloth mask compliance. There was some note that they were going to wear some masks, but it was not enforced. They were tested before arrival at the camp, but that occurred up to 12 days prior to camp start. The following week, 363 campers joined, much like a school age, six to 19 years of age. There was indoor and outdoor vigorous singing and cheering, and no masking for the children. On June 23rd, a teenage staff member had symptoms and was positive for COVID-19. And I think you all know where this discussion is headed, but I'll go through some of the details. Next slide, please. Of the nearly 600 attendees total, you can see 597, approximately half developed infection. Equal distribution between male and female. Certainly, the children were infected as well, as you can see, from age 10, six to 10, it had the highest attack rate. And trainees, staff, and campers all had substantial infection rates. The children were also kept in cabins, and so crowding into larger cabins was associated with more infections. Next slide, please. So how to interpret some key points here? So masking is important. This work really definitively outlines that kids can transmit infection. Most of the transmission occurred from staff to campers, but there was camper-to-camper transmission, and more rarely camper-to-staff transmission, although primarily staff-to-camper. Nonetheless, masking is extremely important. Negative testing should not give reassurance that you're good to go without masking for weeks on end, and of course, increased time in the camp increased the risk of infection. Next slide, please. Now, this second example is published in the MMWR. That stands for morbidity mortality weekly report. That is the CDC's Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC's weekly journal. It's peer-reviewed, and this is from a camp in Maine. Now, in contrast, these children were also tested at the start, but however, there was extremely high compliance, fastidious compliance to masking. The children were brought in initially, in the first two weeks, into cohorts, much like you might see or envision in an elementary school. And in addition to masking, there was distancing. And one, some folks have speculated that, well, perhaps this was because it was a rural camp in Maine that they had success. And this camp actually drew children from 41 states. If you look at the national average of their attendees, it's a higher infection rate than is going on in North Carolina right now. They had over 1,000 children come to an overnight camp in Maine, and despite being clustered together overnight, the assiduous use of masking, consistently high rate of masking, prevented any secondary transmission within the camp. So this was a camp that went on throughout the summer without secondary transmission. Go ahead, next slide, please. So how do we interpret these two publications together? One of the questions that I get asked, go ahead, next slide, please. One of the questions that I get asked all the time is around, should we be focused on metrics, or what about a plan that we might have? And so, the things that we've been seeing consistently in the peer-reviewed literature and elsewhere is that the adherence to masking, distancing, and hand hygiene is really what's important. That is, if you look at camps, whether it's here locally in North Carolina, Chapel Hill or Durham, YMCA camps, throughout the southeast, throughout the northeast, when you don't mask, things don't go well. When you do, things tend to go well. When you are in childcare, for example, in New York City, and you have masking, things tend to go well. When you don't mask, things don't go well, as evidenced by the pre-K experience in Utah that was recently reported by the CDC. The university experience reflects this. You can see institutions where there's consistent masking use, a plan around how to mask, and distancing. For example, at Davidson, Duke, Norwich University, and many others, they're having success. And at universities where there is not a consistent policy around masking, or there is, young adults are allowed to go into establishments that serve alcohol and engage in a variety of legal and illegal activity that disinhibits the frontal lobe, and they unmask, things do not go well for colleges, as evidenced by University of Illinois, Havana Champaign, and Alabama. You're having quite a bit of success here in the state of North Carolina in Plan B, provided that masking compliance is 99% or higher. For example, at Yadkin County Schools, Heredot Statesville Schools, the key elements are consistently masking, distancing, the ability to distance, and hand hygiene. And metrics can be a small part of the decision. Certainly, if the percent positives are less than 1%, and there's not community transmission, as you're seeing in some countries in the southern hemisphere and in Asia, you can relax some of the policies around masking. Relaxing that too much, as evidenced in Western Europe, however, can cause you real problems. And if you have incidences where your percent positives are well over 10%, you can start running into other societal problems in the context of having schools open. But there's not data that says 3% versus 4% versus 6% predicts success or failure. What will predict failure is if you don't have masking compliance, you don't have a plan, you don't have leadership at the school level to adhere to the plan, and you don't have community buy-in to the plan, then things will not go well. If you have community buy-in on the plan, that is families, students, teachers, you have local leadership, that is principals, assistant principals, teacher leaders at the school level who ensure adherence to the plan, you have a school district that outlines the plan, those school districts are having success in Plan B. Now, a couple of special questions that come up over and over and over again. If you don't mind, Dr. Felder, maybe I can outline some anticipated responses to frequently asked questions. Would that be okay, if I took a minute to do that? One would be around lunch, one would be around N95 masks, and one would be around children who cannot mask, for example, in the adaptive curriculum. So let's take lunch first. In, I get asked about should masking, should mask, should there be mask breaks? And ideal time for masking breaks around schools tend to be at four times: before school, after school, when you're drinking water, and when you're eating lunch. So otherwise, while on school property, you should have a mask on. Now, for eating lunch, the school districts that have been successful, and I think one of the Sandhills School Districts came up with this idea initially, and that is, they have the children go in masks to get their lunch. They go to the cafeteria or to their brown bag lunch or to their favorite lunchbox, you will. And they get their lunch, and they come back to their classroom. They're more than six feet apart in the classroom. They sit down, they take out all their food, they cut up their apple, or they open up their milk carton, or they take the crust off their PB&J sandwich that mom made, or they, whatever they'd need to do to prep their food, they do that. Everybody gets their food ready. Teacher says, "Okay, hand hygiene, take off your mask, put your mask inside, you have 10 to 14 minutes to eat. No talking, just go ahead and eat." They're not going to eat too fast, but we're here to get our business done here. We're here to eat our lunch. And then, once everybody's done eating, and hygiene, put our mask back on, and then we can have fun, we can talk, we can interact, clean up after ourselves, and enjoy the rest of lunch. Why the arbitrary cutoff at 15 minutes? Part of that has to do with the CDC's definition of meaningful contact. You will be six feet apart, but you know, that time that we've seen some secondary transmissions in the hospital, and I'll get to that in a minute here, has been when staff actually take off their mask and eat lunch and talk to each other close by for 30 and 45 minutes. So we want to keep that mask break for lunchtime short. The, the point about the hospital infection control setting. So, I get asked quite frequently about N95 masks. And folks will, when they'll look on social media, or they'll read the popular newspapers, they'll see hospital staff almost in spacesuits, if you will, taking care of patients. And in the intensive care unit, when you are intubating somebody and you're putting them on a breathing machine, and they are critically ill from COVID-19, you definitely want to have an extremely high level of protection. However, for routine medical care, that is, I take my, I go see my doctor to get an injection for tendonitis in my left shoulder. I'm wearing a cloth mask. My doctor's wearing just, not an N95 mask, but a regular surgical mask. I don't have symptoms. I attest to not having symptoms. I haven't had a COVID test. I go in, I get the injection, I'm just wearing a cloth mask. My physician is wearing either a cloth or a medical mask. We're not wearing an N95 mask. When I go see patients in the hospital myself, the children, their families attest to no symptoms, they have not had a test for COVID yet. I go into the room, I have on a medical mask, they have on a cloth mask. If the children are not able to wear a cloth mask, and we have a small percentage of children that are not able to do that, then I wear, this summer, I would borrow my wife's reading glasses, I put them on, and my medical mask. Duke is now, this past month, starting to require a face shield plus a mask in that situation, not an N95 mask. The face shield is not a substitute for a mask. Now, in that setting, at Duke, at UNC hospital systems, at medical schools throughout the country, we are not seeing secondary transmission with the use of cloth and medical masks when we adhere to protocol. So the times when we've had secondary transmission is when we are doing things that you should not be doing in school, for example, intubating patients and putting them on breathing machines. That should not happen in the school environment. It's a high-risk procedure. Testing children for COVID-19, okay? Taking off, the number one time, though, that we get secondary infections in the hospitals when two staff take off their mask at the same time and eat together and talk in the break room, which is why the attention paid to lunch. That leads me to, should N95 masks be routinely employed? And the answer to that is, thus far, the data do not indicate an advantage of an N95 mask over a surgical mask if the patients do not have symptoms and the patients have not had a test for COVID-19. Excuse me. That's not, I'm asymptomatic, just had a little dry throat there. Didn't want you all to worry. Let's see, so I, the third question I get is the adaptive curriculum. The adaptive curriculum, we're seeing in most of the rural school districts, we're seeing about one per thousand students. So in Orange County Schools, I think that would be approximately 12 children, I think, given the size of the, no, sorry, it's six for Orange and 12 for Chapel Hill Carboro. I always flip those two. Regardless, you're looking at a small number of children who really cannot mask in the adaptive curriculum. And that's a challenging situation for all involved. For those kids, most, about half, the rural school districts are finding, about half of them are able to tolerate a face shield. In other circumstances, it's surgical masks or a shield for the adaptive curriculum teachers. The rest of the students, the mainstream students, compliance on masking really needs to be at the 99.99% level throughout the school district. And rural school districts are finding that they can adhere to that throughout the state now that they're in Plan B. With that, I'll take a little bit of a break and see if there are questions.
Should we wait, Hillary? Are there any questions?
I think that we're going to respect Dr. Benjamin's request to go ahead and ask him our questions now, and then we'll try to move through the other items and then take public comment. And then we'll try to move through the other items and then take public comment before our full discussion.
Okay, that sounds great. I just wanted to check.
No, I appreciate that.
So I just had a couple of questions. One is, given how important masking is, it seems like there should be some kind of proper education given on how to wear it. Have you seen or have a recommendation on an education? You know, especially as, you know, making sure it fits around the nose and the mouth area, and it's that it's pulled enough that it's covering your face. Have you seen any education on that? Yes, sir. So in fact, our website right now is up. There's several webinars that are available. The first of which was on masking itself. It's on the ABC, if you Google ABC Science Collaborative, or go to ABCScienceCollaborative.org, all one word. And our team will provide Dr. Felder with that link. We go through that in the first webinar for teachers, and those are now publicly available for families as well. If, after watching those webinars, you know, Orange County Schools has been a very important partner. Dr. Felder and her staff, and a couple, a couple of y'alls folks have been very important partners to us. If they're, if you, if you have suggestions on how to modify that, if you can, or provide additional video instruction, provide additional resources that are going to help your families and your folks in your district, please work with Dr. Felder on that, and we'll see what we can't do to tighten that up for you. And that, that website's up and going right now. Okay, the second question I had is, I've heard different people talk about when you're wearing a cloth mask, the outside of the cloth mask, when you take it off or put it on, you know, being careful that you also wash your hands after that because of, you know, contact on top of it. Do the training videos talk about that? And the reason I'm bringing it up, when you were talking about lunch and, you know, taking it off, I think, you know, especially kids, they're quick to take it off, they're playing, put their hands in their mouth, you know. What's your perspective on that? Yeah, I think the first is fundamentally, what we have is a respiratory virus. And in March, as a community, we lost sight of that a bit. And we got really focused on, gee, we've never really employed masking on a community-wide level in these United States. And, you know, as physicians, you know, we dropped the ball, and, you know, as a community, we didn't jump on this quick enough. We also got a little bit overly focused on problems around touching the face front of the mask. I think that the transmission around that touch, although possible, is going to be much lower and much less important than adherence to wearing the mask. Having said that, your point is extraordinarily well taken. And in that webinar, Dr. Akim Boyo shows the folks who are watching hand hygiene, how to pull the mask from behind the ears, the looped mask from behind the ears, and set it aside. And the sequence for doing that. I am going to speculate some, knowing what I know about the original SARS, which was in 2003, and also based on influenza and other respiratory viruses such as RSV. The money here, really, the money in prevention, what really is going to prevent this, yes, hand hygiene is going to be very, is important. But if you'll get your kids to adhere to masking, that's really going to be a large, large part of the battle here. And that is because the risk here is from mouth to six feet out. That's really the high-risk point. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ms. Smiler and Ms. Hauser.
So I have a couple of questions just on that last point, and related to the indoor mask breaks and lunch. The, some of the concerns that I'm hearing from people are around the notion of people being in the same room together for seven hours a day, and that being pretty different than, you know, in a hospital setting when you are having a shorter meeting time. Just some of the ways that the school setting might be different, right? So students being in the same room with teachers for seven hours a day. People who are infectious often not being symptomatic. So we are likely to end up with people in the school building who are positive for COVID, and then our ventilation systems and being in that setting together, increasing the risk. The idea that, that the, the virus is possible in aerosol form to sort of continue to be in that room. And then connecting that to the lunch idea, the CDC study about the, where they looked at a body of COVID-positive patients, and the people who were, had participated in indoor dining were twice as likely to be COVID-positive than those that hadn't. And so someone sent me an email about, you know, isn't this similar to, you know, going into a restaurant once a week and, you know, eating a meal? And I'm just wondering if you can speak more to some of those things that make, might make a school setting a little bit different than some of those other examples? And also this question about, you know, the parallel between eating lunch at a school and indoor dining in a restaurant?
Okay, I suffer from a little bit of ADD myself. So if I don't get to all your questions, just ping me again, okay? Because there were several there, but let me take them and order as best I can. So the dining thing. So in a typical indoor dining environment, there is not a supervisor that says, stop, nobody eat, everybody have your mask on, get all your food together, and you are under a stopwatch in order to eat. So that's why the recommendate, that's one of the reasons why it's so high a risk environment in the restaurant situation, because people are having their mask off for 30, 45, 60 minutes, and leisurely conversing and being at tables that are sometimes at the beginning of the day, set up six feet from each other. And as the crowd gets a little tighter and tighter and tighter, folks get within six feet of each other, they get closer together. And when you see the transmission that's been well documented in restaurants, and your point is an outstanding one, you're going to have a high-risk environment. And it's to your point that the strict procedure around lunch, I think, is an important part of the plan for a school environment. Your second question that I heard is around ventilation and aerosolization. So there is clearly some very small amount of aerosolization of the virus. Most commonly, you're going to see this, as mentioned, in aerosolizing generating procedures that are going to be done predominantly in a healthcare setting. It is spread of a virus unmasked from one's face to the environment. There's not a magical force field that stops at four feet or six feet, right? What stops the spread of viruses, first and foremost, the mask. And then you can have extension, sometimes it's two feet, sometimes it's four feet, sometimes it's six feet. There are going to be people who get extremely winded or singing, and this has been documented in school choir, where they can, excuse me, church choir, where they can even go a little bit beyond six feet. However, true aerosol transmission is going to be an exceedingly rare event. How do we know that? Well, there are common aerosol infections such as measles, varicella, and tuberculosis. You may recall the concept of, that was expressed very frequently in March and April, when people talked about trying to flatten the curve. And the R0 value, R, capital R, subscript little zero, the R0 value. The R0 value, just as a reminder for other folks, is that if I get infected, and on average, I infect two people, the R0 for that disease such as influenza is two. If, on average, however, I infect one person who gets infected, infects 10 other people or 15 other people, the R0 is 10 or 15. That's the case for varicella. The R0 for measles, which is, again, aerosol transmission, has an R0 of 18. So one infected child with measles will, on average, infect 18 other humans. They can infect people across the room. They can spew it into the air. Somebody walks in 30 minutes later, they can contract measles. When you have aerosol transmission, the dynamics of your environment change entirely. COVID-19 has an R0 of 2.5. It behaves like a respiratory virus that infects people at a three-feet, four-feet, six-foot distance. The, the, and when you look at hospital structures and hospital infrastructure, when we have a patient with measles or tuberculosis or varicella, in other, in order to protect other patients in the hospital setting, we've got to put those children, even asymptomatic children, into negative pressure rooms. We don't have to do that with COVID-19. If you're asymptomatic with COVID-19 in the hospital, you have a regular room. Asymptomatic patient at risk for COVID-19, you have a regular room. Now, in the, excuse me, I lost my, I lost my thought there for a second. Oh, yeah, if you've got, I get asked all the time around ventilation, should schools do more to ventilate their classrooms? Well, the type of ventilation that you need if you're going to be protecting children from something with an R0 of 10 or 15 or 18 is a multimillion-dollar project for a small set of rooms, let alone an entire school, let alone an entire district. If you're looking at ventilation solutions promoted by the heating and air conditioning industry and some of their consultants, what they neglect to tell you is that those interventions have never been shown to reduce infection or to improve public health or to help the human condition. So that's ventilation. All right, seven hours versus one hour. Is it best if I stop and let you probe on those other questions first before I get to seven hours versus one hour? Or should I just keep rolling? What would you prefer?
Can I ask just one follow-up on that last point? About the ventilation? I'm trying to square what you're sharing with the fact that Harvard and Yale's Schools of Public Health both have websites where they provide a set of recommendations for schools around how to change their ventilation systems. And I'm wondering if it is because of a different orientation, one that is around what we have sort of case evidence to prove, and the other one being around risk mitigation? And I'm curious whether you think that is what the difference is? Because I'm trusting that the Schools of Public Health at Yale and Harvard are filled with smart people who have provided some really specific recommendations.
Sure, so, and I would have to look at what Yale and Harvard are recommending specifically. So if you were to say to me, gosh, I've got unlimited resources, and I would like to follow recommendations around changing filters or changing aspects of ventilation. Well, there's no data to say that that's helpful, but there's no data to say that that's harmful. And one of the things I've learned about COVID-19, like many of my colleagues, is not to be overconfident in my answers. So that it may be, it's possible that we learn two and three and four months from now that changing and investing large sums of money into ventilation may ultimately prove to be a wise course of action. That has not been borne out in schools that are adhering to masking and hygiene and distancing within the state of North Carolina under a hybrid model thus far. But we're early in the school year. The data are not perfect, and that's going to be the case with epidemiology. In addition to completing a medical degree and a pediatric presidency and a fellowship in pediatrics, I was PhD-trained also in epidemiology at the, at the local School of Public Health, University of North Carolina. And I can tell you that epidemiology data for any of us is imperfect. It's not like a randomized trial. Each bit of epidemiologic data is like a layer, a tissue layer of evidence that helps inform risk-benefit decisions. And, you know, quite frankly, the, how much a school district should invest in ventilation is both unproven and unknown.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah. The seven hours versus one hour. Okay, this is where I have some confidence, but the least confidence of the three questions that you asked. So for a physician consultant, you're correct, most of the time, I'm not going to be in the room for seven hours, but certainly a nurse in the ICU setting will. But for, they have the care is one-on-one rather than one-on-30, so it's not a perfect comparison. What gives me some pause is in the, for the small number of students in Orange County who are extremely vulnerable, we have the least amount of data as it relates to children in the adaptive curriculum, and for teachers who are unable to mask, and for teachers who are caring for them for hours at a time. And there, the data are, quite frankly, much less strong than what I reported to you around ventilation. There, the data are much less strong than what I reported to you around aerosolization. There, the data are much less strong than what I reported to you around the indoor dining experience. That, that interaction, first of all, that group of, you know, of our four children, one of whom certainly benefited a great deal from the EC teachers that we have in this area. They're incredible resource for the community. And we're certainly, in this area in particular, blessed to have such a blessed to have such a small, strong group of, uh, and the data are small, the data are incomplete. It's the children who are unable to mask, uh, in that environment that I need, I think that, um, that I have the least, um, least confidence in, what we had, the data that we have. However, um, in the districts that are open right now, at least in North Carolina in the collaborative, we are not, we have not seen secondary, uh, spread, uh, there yet. Um, that does not mean, um, that's, uh, anything other than an area that warrants, uh, very special attention by, uh, the district, the board, uh, the principal and the, and the folks involved. And I wish, I wish I had a better answer for you, but the, the data are just not robust.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin.
Ma'am?
Oh, I just said thank you for that. That was helpful. Oh, Ms. Hauser?
So, uh, thank you for this. This is great information. Um, I have a couple of really simple questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One is back to the ventilation topic and, uh, so, you know, one of the questions I have is the size of the room. So we have some offices, especially in our older schools, where our social workers, guidance counselors, nurses work, and poor in those spaces. And so should we, um, consider not allowing, um, more than one person in them? Should we consider having this worked on in other rooms and possibly closing off those rooms? That's one question. Um, second question is sometimes our social workers, uh, might, or, or interventionists might get involved with a child that's disruptive, and they may have to take them out of class, and they may have to hold, they would normally might hold on to them because some of them are actually even runners. So, so there's a question about, you know, what risks are involved there and what might, you know, what do we have to do without that? And the third thing is, it's great to imagine that mask compliance is, is good. I think about this with my diet all the time, compliance is great, but the motivation is a whole other thing. And I was wondering if your website talks about, um, best practices for, um, creating compliance and getting kids to actually wear masks? You know, how do you motivate them to wash their hands for twenty seconds? What do we ask, what should we ask the parents to do? So, you know, what is, you know, so does your website provide that kind of information to us? About what, what schools are doing to get kids to do it?
Great. So, um, let me take those, um, in order. So, in the, uh, small, uh, unventilated office, if people are within six feet of each other for a prolonged period of time, that's simply, um, you know, risk of acquiring COVID nineteen is, uh, multifactorial. So if you ask me, is having folks in either one person at an office at a time or, um, is having people in a larger office setting better than a smaller office setting? The answer is yes. Um, and I'm sorry to not be super helpful here. Um, whether or not you should, um, have folks together, um, you know, those are times where they, it's ultimately a risk benefit decision for the board and for the principal and for the school district. That level of advice from someone like me is probably not appropriate as to whether or not you, uh, should, uh, be in that small of an office setting for a prolonged period of time. I can tell you that, um, the major risk there is going to be when, um, because I haven't seen, I haven't even seen the offices of, that you're referring to. I just don't have enough information to give you a great answer. Um, so in those settings, the smaller the room, the more important it is for those adults to have masking compliance in the, which they should be having if they're on school property. In the holding of children. So very frequently, um, we're doing physical exams on children, um, every day. We do hand hygiene, listen to them with a stethoscope, otoscope into the ears, um, joint exams, um, thorough physical exam because a child is in the hospital. It's happening multiple, uh, times a day, um, every single, uh, day. And, um, the key there for the both the staff or faculty member, uh, involved is to, uh, for the adult to be masked, the child to be masked, for hand hygiene prior to putting hands on child, and certainly hand hygiene, um, afterward. Uh, that needs to be, uh, thorough. Um, then, uh, the question around, um, uh, compliance. So the website has been up for, um, publicly, uh, was soft launched a few days ago. It's been up, um, just for a couple of hours now. At the moment, it does not have best practices around compliance. I know that for, um, other superintendents in the collaborative that are currently in Plan C, they've been able to, uh, take teams to other school districts to, um, in a multidisciplinary way, actually see, uh, eyes on, uh, what masking compliance looks like in some of these, uh, more rural counties that are having, uh, some, uh, considerable success. They're also, um, talking directly, um, uh, at times peer to peer around how to improve compliance. Um, I can tell you that, um, I'm a little sheepish around, um, directly providing such advice, um, to folks who are as skilled as K through twelve educators as far as motivating and interacting with children on a daily basis in the school, uh, environment. I suspect most of that, um, kind of lessons learned would be on the peer to peer, uh, level. And eventually the website, um, we hope to facilitate that. So, um, responsive.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes. And so I, I have, um, actually a parent reached out to me, and then after reading, I have a concern about a way to mitigate the risk of COVID in our lidless toilet, because we have lidless toilets and, and this whole business of toilet plumb, you know, the water droplets that can spray up when you flush. So I just wanted to get your, uh, feedback on that because I hadn't thought about it until the parent called me, and then I read about it at one of those Harvard spots about the toilet plumb, and when you flush the, the aerosol, um, uh, type, whatever, will, will, um, just go up in the air. And the response I read, it said, well, you just need to rush out of the stall and keep your mask on. But it's just hard to tell kids to hold it, and it would be hard to tell kids to flush and zip out of there really fast because you wouldn't want anybody falling down. So, you know, help me understand about this, um, this toilet plumb.
Yeah. So here is, um, here's just a few items and, um, uh, for you to consider, and then, um, we have to, we have the presentation on ventilation, um, airspace and the environment. And unfortunately, there was a glitch in that recording, and so we have to re-record that webinar. Um, the slide deck is available, um, on, uh, the website. Um, and once we re-record the webinar, which my hope is will be this week, then for equal access, we'll need to do Spanish translation and closed captioning. And my anticipation that is that it'll be up next week. But, uh, as it relates to the details of your, um, question, so just like, um, the question around ventilation, it's, um, one can find genetic material from the virus in all sorts of different places in the environment. That's much different than, so it tests positive for COVID, right? Because you find the genetic material. Your test picks up the genetic material. It's how PCR testing works. But that does not mean that you actually have live virus in the environment. That's the next level up. Even if you're able to capture live viruses from surfaces or that have been, uh, uh, further than six feet out or, um, around, uh, the bathroom stall, having a high enough burden of virus per cubic millimeter of air to infect another human is another level entirely. And so that kind of, uh, fecal transmission, although theoretically possible, is not widespread, uh, transmission of COVID nineteen. Genetic material, uh, around, um, open toilets, definitely. Um, the occasional, uh, the ability to, um, take sewage samples and ultimately, uh, grow, uh, uh, culture viruses uh, uh, also can be done. But there's a whole nother level to actually, uh, transmitting that, uh, as an infection to another human being. So a great question and one that, um, starting in, uh, March, uh, just like, um, your colleague's question around, um, aerosol and, uh, ventilation, um, earlier in this session, um, very much, um, concerned the, um, uh, medical and public health community.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Doyle?
Um, Dr. Benjamin, I just wanted to comment, um, for other people that, at the, um, uh, with the ABC Science Collaborative, the, um, the presentation that explained the, um, that there's even more like viral load in the nose and the importance of having a mask covering the nose was really impactful to me. And then I also looked at your, um, Students with Disabilities slide deck today, and there's a lot of good information in there as well. I just want people to know that those were, were there.
Yeah, thanks, um, for mentioning that. Yes, um, absolutely. Um, just like, um, the seatbelt in the car does not do you any good if you don't, um, buckle it. Right? You just put the seatbelt around your shoulder so that the police officer doesn't ticket you for not having a seatbelt, but you don't buckle the seatbelt, that's not going to be a good plan if you get into a car accident. The same thing's true around a mask, just slinging it around your neck or off of one ear, or most commonly around the mouth, but not around the nose, is not helpful. Uh, there's actually, uh, more virus in what we call the nasopharynx, which is here backwards, um, than in other parts of, um, uh, the body. So it's really, uh, your point's really well taken that compliance includes not only bringing the mask to school, not only, uh, wearing the mask at all times on school property, but also includes wearing the mask at all times on school property in the correct way.
Ms. Smiley?
I have another one. Um, so I know that right now in North Carolina, there are fourteen active clusters at school locations. Um, and I'm curious whether you all have looked at, um, sort of what has caused those outbreaks and, and whether they're sort of all covered by the masks plus distancing plus hand hygiene, um, or if any of them are unexplained. I don't know, I don't know how many, whether you've looked into those at all. So I guess that's probably the first question.
So the details of those, I have not. Um, where, as you, uh, know, we're only working with fifty out of the, um, hundred and fifteen, um, school districts in North Carolina. Um, many of the districts that are, actually, let me take that back. I'm aware of two of those, um, fourteen, uh, clusters in detail within the collaborative. Um, let me go back to my original statement. Um, for most of those, um, clusters, I have not looked into them. Um, it's outside of scope because it's, um, in districts, um, outside, um, the collaborative. The, um, the clusters within the collaborative that, um, I'm aware of have been around a couple of, um, uh, a couple of settings. We've had some districts that, um, initially in August, um, and, uh, started out the school year not requiring pre-K students to mask. Um, that has since changed. Uh, we've had some school districts that in August, um, decided that, um, the focus K through three might not need to be quite as thorough. That has changed. Um, we've had, um, uh, we had one, um, school district where, uh, some educators, um, together, uh, went out to eat, um, took off their masks, um, commuted together to lunch, um, had lunch together. Um, and, uh, uh, ran into some challenges. Um, for the other, um, for the clusters outside, no, I've not, outside the collaborative, no, I have not looked at those.
Great, thank you. And many of them actually aren't in the public school systems, um, in the first place. Some of them are in, um, uh, charters or, um, Christian schools or different, um, things. I understand you all are working with, um, school districts, but that's helpful. Thank you.
Our scope of work is strictly the, that has strictly been, um, the public schools. We are talking, um, with the National Institute of Health. If, um, our mandate includes charter schools thus far, it has not. Um, and there's just kind of a multitude of, um, you know, we're taking taxpayer dollars, we need to be careful around equity. Uh, we need to be careful around helping as many children, um, as we can. And it's almost as, one of the things that parents at private schools, um, sometimes, um, don't realize is that is, you know, it's almost as much, um, effort to, um, get one school off the ground as it is to get one, um, district off the ground. Whether getting off the ground is, um, hey, we're going to stay in Plan C, and that's what's right for our school district, and, you know, we're thoughtfully considering this. All right, right. That's, oh, hopefully it's been helpful. Uh, or if getting off the ground, your definition of that is after-school care for a small group of children, but everybody else is remote. Okay, great. Hopefully it's been helpful. Or Plan B, or whatever it is, um, a school district might decide to do.
Any other questions from the board? I don't see any. So thank you so much, Dr. Benjamin. This has been incredibly insightful and helpful to us.
Great. Thank, uh, thanks you all, and, um, uh, you know, Great. Thank, thanks you all. And, you know, thanks for what you're doing for the children of Orange County. I know you all face some challenging, difficult decisions. And I'm, I'm grateful if anything that I've said has been helpful. And best of luck with whatever decisions you make. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin.
Thank you again, Dr. Benjamin. So at this time, we'd like to provide the board with information with regards to two surveys that were administered last week. So we administered a survey to all staff as well as to our families. And at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Stowe, our Public Information Officer, to present the results today.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and fellow board members. And this time I would like to follow up on two recent surveys. We have provided multiple opportunities for our families and staff to provide feedback via phone calls, web forms and surveys as part of our preparation for the return to our classrooms via Plan B and to provide you with current stakeholder information. We facilitated two surveys last week and they were unofficially closed yesterday and today. And I say unofficially because we haven't heard from everyone and we still want to hear from everyone. So our link to the family survey is still on our website and, and that will remain open. And we will continue to look at the data. And for our staff that haven't participated, which is about a fourth, we certainly encourage them to do so as well. It really is important that we hear from everyone. The, the results I'm going to share today are as of about four o'clock this afternoon. And I'm going to keep this high level. And if you have specific things that you would like drilled down or questions that you may have, happy to take note of that either during this, this moment or afterwards. And I'm going to try to be quick because I know we have a lot of other information that you need to hear from. And my colleagues have equally worthwhile things to share with you. So this first slide, the staff survey, I want to address that first. All of our staff, all staff, approximately 1,005 were encouraged to complete a survey last week. We had a 73% completion rate. And we had 730 total. And of those 414 were teachers. We had some discussions about, do we need to separate that? But I share this first response with you because in looking at the responses, and we had five questions, the, the response rate was very similar. And so for the purpose of this evening, I'm going to stick with all staff. But I wanted to give you just one example. The first question was, should the district transition to Plan B? Will you be returning to work? And you can see that the, the response from teachers versus all staff was very much similar. So again, we're going to look at all staff. And I want to drill down on this piece on the next slide. And so we had a percent of all staff said 60% or 60% that they would return. And 15% stated no. And then the other piece was other. And the way that this was worded was almost like a maybe and if not, why not? So a yes was definite, a no was definite, and then other was what's involved with that. So the second part of this question was, if you answered yes, why? If you'd like to share, they had the opportunity. If you answered no or otherwise. So under yes, these are common themes. And, and you can see that just, it's a requirement, my job, need the income. And that in-person learning is best for students. And then the common themes among no and other, which tended to be similar, if not identical, was, you know, high-risk family members and just the safety aspect. This third question for staff were under these conditions, if they felt, you know, comfortable as they understand them to return and, and looking at safety, you know, not just what we know and how we feel, but as we look at the data. And I should have mentioned earlier that when we shared this with staff, they, and families, they were provided with links to data. They were provided with links to the ABC Collaborative webinars. They were provided with the data that we have via Orange County Health Department Partners and current metrics that our task force is looking at, those four metrics. And so then we drilled down with regards to safety. And 58% rounding up stated that they didn't feel safe. And we again asked them to provide feedback as to why or why not. These are comments with regards to why not. And again, proper PPE, concerns about the flu season, the pandemic, and, and another, you know, theme of bringing that back. You know, having high-risk family members and bringing that back home. And to, to Dr. Benjamin's comments earlier, you know, several, well, quite a few staff you know, ask, will everyone follow the safety procedures? Will students and staff follow all these procedures and, and do what's put in place? And then another part of the survey is certainly professional development. And for our staff, what types of training they would need. Again, this is talking about planning to return to school, planning for in-person instruction, understanding that in-person instruction and via Plan B, we are still remote. So we, we're, we're looking at, at the present and alternating week schedule. And so, so there will still, remote learning will still be part of that. But there will be the opportunity for in-person should families opt for Plan B and not opt for a fully remote, 100% remote program moving forward. And so some of the common words and themes you can see here. And and it really was specific to the items that we referenced in the question. You know, social, emotional learning, safety, instructional strategies. And this is something that our curriculum and instruction team is diligently and has been working on. And will continue to do so to help support our teachers throughout Plan C and Plan B, when we are at that point. And then the final question, and, and we've also, we've, we've asked this in a number of ways, but, but specifically if and when we return to Plan B, if they would be interested in a supervised learning lab? Because that is an opportunity that we facilitate that is, and will be on site. And more than 50, well, 56% said this wasn't applicable. And then we had a small percentage that said they were interested. And this is something that we'll continue to work with Human Resources, Human Resources Department, just in terms of staff needs. If staff have children, then this would be a need. If they need childcare and, and we want to support that. So I anticipate that we will drill down into this, this question in particular, possibly a little more. We wanted to start with what we know. So before I move to the family survey results, were there any specific questions or items that you would like? I know we're meeting tomorrow. Happy to follow up.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you. Ms. Stowe, the survey from Orange County Association of Educators, was that taken into consideration as well? From what I gathered from their survey, it was a pretty high percentage of staff with concern. So I was wondering if, if you have that information?
Yes, we do. And I don't know if Dr. Felder would like to add anything to that because I know she works closely with that group and certainly aware of the survey and the results.
Thank you.
I can interject. Ms. Moore, yes, we have considered that data as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
I just have a quick comment. Thank you for looking and trying to figure out childcare solutions for staff. I understand it's complicated and not everyone would necessarily want to use it. But I do think that's one of the pieces of the puzzle here that's important. So thank you. And, and also just to request, this might be for this and for the other survey. I'm wondering if we, if the board would be able to receive like all of those comments? So that we could just read through every single one. I know that's something I'd like to do.
Yes, Ms. Smiley, great question. That's
You got cut off, but I think that was a yes.
Yes, it's in process.
Okay, great.
We're working on it.
We spoke about it earlier today.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Hauser?
I have just a couple of questions. One is, can we get this data broken down by school and by grade? So if we're considering, I'll make this up, if we're considering bringing back K-12, how many of our K-12 teachers are going to come back? So it would be interesting to kind of match the responses to the, to our schools and grades. And then the second thing is, have we done anything to have our teachers and our social workers, all the interventionists, the folks that are working with kids in schools, talk to their peers in other schools to learn more about how it's working for them? Because right now they're working in the context of our own world. But have they spoken to any of their peers in other schools? And after doing that, would that change their response one way or the other?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Hauser. I, I don't know what individual teachers have done, but with regards to, from a district level, that's something that we're working on now. We're making arrangements for that to happen. I had the pleasure of actually visiting a school district last week. And we were certainly invited to, to do just that. So we are working on that with our person from, who works with our school district and others from the Department of Public Instruction.
And Ms. Hauser, your other question with regards to the breakdown. Yes, I ran out of answers today. I would, we're all very intrigued and interested in the breakdown and how that plays out. And certainly don't want to presume that percentage across the board would be equal at all of our schools. This is what we've shared with our principals, with our department leads, the district, specific to departments, child nutrition, transportation, as they were all included. And yes, we are looking at breaking this down by grade levels in addition to schools and departments.
Ms. Stevens, did you have a question?
Oh, I, I have a comment because, and I have to bring this up because, you know, we got so many emails from, from community members. And in a couple of emails, I wanted to share this since we have our staff survey results. A couple of staff members expressed concern that they weren't given an option besides Plan B. You know, they weren't allowed to, you know, so that, that's just my, I just wanted to throw that out there in case we go any further. Because that, that didn't seem right, actually. Staff members said, I'm reading it, staff members, so they wanted an option of leaving, you know, saying if they want to stay at Plan C. So, thank you.
Not seeing any other questions.
Mrs. McKenzie, if it's okay, I just wanted to go back to Mrs. Smiley's query about the comments. My understanding is that the board has full access to the comments now. You should have them. If not, you can let me know, but you should have access.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on to the family survey results and certainly can go back to staff if something comes up. So for the family survey results, again, we did provide context around the, the survey. And there's a screenshot to the right, background data, links to data points, references to the task force. Again, our, our work with, with Orange County Health Department in addition to the North Carolina Health Department. And the purpose of, of this survey, again, I mentioned, we've surveyed several times to, to get feedback since we, we left schools in the spring. But the, the real purpose of this was just to assess families' comfort level with if, if and when we move to Plan B. That's, that's the plan. And what's their comfort level? We surveyed close to 7,200 families and encouraged them to complete a survey between September 24th and 28th. We, to date, have a 59% completion rate. And as I mentioned, they can continue, just to go to our website, there's a prominent link right on the front page. And we will continue in our weekly communications via our schools to share this link because we really do need to hear from each and every family.
Ms. So, do we have a breakdown by subgroup of the response, the responses to this survey?
This survey unofficially closed at noon today and therefore, no, we do not. But I'm happy, as mentioned previously, to, to pull any subset that you'd like to look at. And, and we'll certainly look into that and have that ready tomorrow.
Thank you.
So the first question was, again, I mentioned on the previous slide, we provided a lot of data. And the first question is just, given what you know, do you feel comfortable with your child returning to in-person learning? Should the board approve Plan B, proposed alternating weeks? Or do you prefer that they stay at home, 100% remote learning for the remainder of the first semester? And on this answer, rounding up, 45% preferred that they participate in remote, 100% at-home instruction. And 55% preferred that they do switch and move into the in-person option. Now, again, that was just given what they know. When we look at the next question, it put a, or we placed an emphasis on safety. So we are aware that, we've always addressed safety. We've always put safety first, but we're aware, as we shared earlier, that, that safety and protocols, they're, they're, there's a lot we continue to learn. And so we wanted to really specifically address if, and we would, follow all appropriate safety measures. Then what's your preference? And so it's interesting that the percent that was interested or expressed an interest in returning increased to 60.8%. So a little bit of a jump there when we emphasize the safety aspect. And so, you know, for our continuous improvement model and feedback, we, we certainly want to ensure and are working closely with all departments, specifically Operations Transportation, on how we can communicate the safety plans that we have in place, that we will have in place, and make it as easy to understand as possible. And the work with the ABC Collaborative is really, has been phenomenal. They've got a lot of expertise that helps us because that is not our area of expertise. The third question was specific for those who stated, yes, we'd like to return, like for our children to return. Do you need transportation? And the vast majority stated that they did not. However, even though only 28% noted a school bus, that, that still equates to over 1,000 students. And, you know, again, I mentioned earlier, looking at the data, drill down, certainly our Transportation Department, as we move forward, depending upon your recommendation, we will certainly have to look at where they all live. And, and help set that, Transportation would have to help set that up. And then one more to dive deeper into that question. Of those 1,099, do you need transportation morning and afternoon or just morning, just afternoon? And 791 students will need both.
Kelly?
Sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a really quick question on that? Can I ask a really quick question on that?
Absolutely.
The parents that need transportation are those, is that within the subgroup of parents that want to return to school? If you're in Virtual Academy, the question doesn't matter, right? So, is it just, is that just the parents that are interested in returning to school?
Yes, so that is accurate. However, we do, as part of our verification piece, and we just haven't had time, because this unofficially closed at noon, we do need to look back and ensure, because we didn't set this up where if they answered no, we're not coming back, you don't have the option to answer this question. So, so we will go back and verify that. And also, as, as the board is aware, we, we have struggled with obtaining accurate email addresses for all families. I'm happy to say that the number we're missing is under 800, which is much better than it was. But for those families, they were able to access the link on the website. And so, we're in the process of verifying that the information they provided is accurate, based on the student ID or student names, school, or. So, to answer your question, yes, we will verify that. At this point, I couldn't say that's 100% positive, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, the next question, family survey results. So, this was specific to how can we help with returning to in-person learning? Or continuing to participate in 100% remote learning? Because our goal, our academic goals are the same, whether they're with us in a building or not. And so, the, the diagram to the right gives you some feedback as to which words appeared the most. Always happy to see learning is prominent. Some of the themes interesting, that online's working. And likewise, in-person's needed, open schools. So, again, that doesn't surprise us, because we know that this is, is and isn't working for certain populations and families. Eager to return, not sure it's safe. And then just, you know, what will instruction look like in Plan B? Recognizing that it will not look like what it, you know, what it did pre-COVID. But certainly, we have the same goals and, and look forward to the day that we can have students back with us. And the last question was just optional comments, any, anything that they weren't able to express in the survey. And there you can see some of the common themes. And Dr. Felder shared, you'll have access to the survey results and the individual responses. And you'll be able to peruse those. And, and that'll certainly, you know, help you best understand the feedback we've received to date. Any questions on this portion? Mr. Atherton?
So, my question's more of a, a comment. I've, as many board members have had families contact me about the survey. And one of the predominant questions I'm getting, and I'm sure the other board members are, is parents are hesitant in filling it out, because they're concerned about, what does Virtual Academy look like? And am I, here I'm going to change teachers? And, you know, what's, how is that going to look? So, there's concerns about filling it out before they know what they would look like, or what are they agreeing to? So, I'm not necessarily looking for an answer right this second, but I do want to bring it up, that it's been a predominant thing that I've been told of why they're not filling, some of them are not filling it out.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Atherton, for sharing that. So, tomorrow night, we plan to give more details around what that will look like. So, you can expect that as part of tomorrow night's presentation.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's helpful to know. I definitely have had that experience as well, so I'm glad. We'll dig into that a little bit more. Ms. Hauser?
I have a, kind of the same question about this, the parent survey. And that's, how do the results break down by school and grade? And even in terms of the demographics of who's, who's responding? In term, what schools did we have better response rates from? What schools did we not have good response rates from? So, who are we missing? The numbers do look pretty close to where we were a few months ago when we asked virtual versus remote. So, so it's pretty close. But I'm just curious who, who we're hearing from and who we're not hearing from? And how it breaks down by grade? And who wants to come back?
So, Ms. Hauser, if I may respond to that, you did receive the responses for both surveys in your email this evening, so you should have that. And while the schools may not be listed, the grades and some of the information is there so that you may, and it's in the Excel format, so that you can kind of sort and kind of get at some of the data that you're asking. And then, of course, we'd be more than happy to fill in some of those details as you have any more questions, if, when you're, you know, perusing through the spreadsheet. And please know that in the spreadsheet, there are two, two worksheets in the one workbook. So, thank you.
I'm not, I'm just not seeing that yet. So, it may be that it just hasn't, my computer hasn't refreshed or something, but.
I don't have any of that yet.
I'm going to need that reset.
Okay, we'll definitely double check that.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't note that the final comment was a, thinking in the family survey results that certainly stress our teachers and the work they're doing. And, and just want to echo those sentiments, because our teachers are working really hard. And they, they want kids in person as well, and, and certainly are doing their very best to meet their needs while we're remote. Ms. Doyle?
Ms. Doyle? Yes, I just wanted to thank Ms. Stowe and staff for putting together all this survey data. I think it's really invaluable. And I just feel compelled to highlight that only 55% of our teachers feel prepared to go back under Plan B. I mean, that's just a real, not real confident, it's not confident sense I'm getting from that data. And that 50% don't feel safe going back. And so, I know that some teachers have expressed feeling obligated to go back for these other reasons. So, I just think we have a ways to go. And I know there's been a lot of efforts. I know our teachers are working overtime. I know our staff is working overtime. And I just think we really need as much communication as possible. What, what would it take for teachers to feel safe? What would it take for particularly the teachers with the most hands-on interaction with students, the pre-K, kindergarten, EC teachers, to really feel like they have the full support of our district if they were to, to take that? And so, I just, I just hope we can continue with as much communication as possible so we can get to a place where we have fuller confidence.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to be transparent about some things. So, the feedback that I have received, the expression, "We care about our staff," is field. So, there've been some administrators and staff across the board that have reached out to me. That the, I guess, kind, they feel pressured about returning without a lot of options. So, I hope that we just take everything into consideration and put some actions behind our words so that our staff, you know, we can show them that we do care about their emails that they're sending to us, their safety and wellness too. So, I just want to make sure that we have put some action words behind that. Thank you.
I'll see any more questions. Dr. Felder? Well, if anything comes. Let us. Sorry, if anything comes up, let us know, because there's data's never-ending. And looking at it and analyzing it, we certainly want to do the best we can. And if Dr. Felder has follow-up, I'll turn it over to her. If not, another day, our next presenters, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stowe, for that information.
I was waiting to see if Dr. Felder had anything to say, but if not, I will go ahead.
You're welcome to do so. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, Ms. Stowe.
Hey, Dr. Felder. Good evening, Board Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Felder. The purpose of this items is to give you an update from the Metrics Task Force. I have with me tonight Cortana Stewart, the Director of Orange County Health Department, and Rebecca Crawford from the Orange County Health Department. And she's the Deputy Area Commander. They're here tonight to discuss the metrics with us. With that said, I will turn it over to Ms. Crawford to discuss the next slide.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, everyone. As you requested, the Health Department has updated the COVID-19 metrics for Orange County, which are based on those that are shared weekly by Governor Cooper and Dr. Mandy Cohen to, in order to measure the impact of the pandemic on the entire state. So, I won't review all of our explanations tonight, but feel free to ask me any questions once we get to the end of the four metrics. As I shared, these are the metrics that I shared with the Task Force this past Friday afternoon. And the number of confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Orange County, which is in that top graph in blue, have steadily declined over our four-week review period, which is August 23rd through September 20th. We do see a downward trend in all four weeks, and fewer than 125 cases per week for three of those weeks, which is a number that can be easily case investigated and contact traced by our existing staff. Next measure in that yellowish-green color is our percent positive of total tests, which were collected in this same time period. Now, those have also steadily declined over the four-week period. And it is below 5% for three of the weeks, which is the recommended percent positive, which is recommended by the state for moving forward with reopening. And that metric is based on World Health Organization information also. Our third metric in gray is the number of emergency department cases of COVID-like illness, which has also remained stable, yet also in a downward trend in this review period. We did see an increased number of cases in Week 2 and Week 3. However, the number of those cases is still in line with what we've seen in prior weeks. Finally, at that last graph, the total number of hospitalized individuals with COVID-19 in the UNC system has continued to decrease for three of the four weeks of the review period. So, in some, our metrics are definitely moving in the right direction. But as Dr. Benjamin mentioned, we should remember that COVID-19 has not been eradicated. And we must continue to wear our masks, to wash our hands, and wait six feet apart in order to keep these numbers as low as they are now. Thanks, Jason.
Next slide, please. Please note on this slide are the metrics that Ms. Crawford just discussed. This slide shows the threshold as well as the current trend in Orange County for COVID-like illnesses, percent positive tests, case counts, and hospitalizations. As you can see, three of the four metrics are in green, meaning that the thresholds have been met. The only one that has not been completely met is COVID-like illnesses, but it is in made progress status. I'm also happy to say that none of the metrics that we are measuring are in, are in the no-progress status. So, as a county, we are moving in the right direction. Before we get into the Task Force recommendation, I would like to remind everyone of the Task Force charge. I'm not going to read the entire, entire charge to you, but the charge states that the purpose of the Task Force is to watch the trends in four metrics for four weeks prior to making a recommendation to the Orange County Board of Education. The charge also goes on to mention that the Task Force will take other factors into consideration when making recommendations to the Board of Education, including, but not limited to, holidays, seasons, demographics, travel flusters, household contacts, and feedback from our families and staff. Feedback such as the surveys that Ms. Stowe just spoke about. The Metric Task Force voted after hearing about where the metric stood. They looked at some preliminary data from the Staff and Family Survey. I also mentioned to them about the possibility of a slow rollout of Plan B. And we also had a discussion session in which they asked questions and had a discussion around moving to Plan B. Some of the concerns that I heard from Task Force members were around student and staff well-being. They asked questions around staffing, PPEs, and ventilation. With all that said, the Metrics Task Force recommended not to go to Plan B by a vote of 17 to 0, with six people abstaining. Before I pause for any questions, I just want to publicly thank the Health Department, Ms. Stewart and Ms. Crawford, for all their help during the pandemic. They take all of our phone calls, including the ones on the weekends. They are great, they're great partners with Orange County Schools. I also want to thank the Task Force members for staying engaged and for their input and for their lively discussion at the last meeting. I'm finding that the Task Force members are a group that cares a lot about our students, staff, and community. At this time, we can take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I also want to echo my thanks to Ms. Crawford and Ms. Stewart for your continued support and collaboration with Orange County Schools. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for leading the Metrics Task Force. I know that this is no small thing to take on. I just wanted to briefly say that I guess I was a little bit surprised by the vote. And I, you know, my understanding as a board member was that the Metrics Task Force was going to be mostly voting on just the trend of the metrics. So, I, I guess what I would hope for the future would be that maybe there could be even two votes, like a vote just on the metrics and then a vote also based on whatever conversations are had. I will say that, you know, I know that board members are individually engaging with the metrics. We talk about them almost constantly with each other in meetings, at every chance we get. And it is also meaningful to me that a group of dedicated people serving on this Task Force, watching those same metrics and having conversations about other considerations have all arrived at no. So, both are meaningful to me. But I think also, you know, in the future, it would be helpful to me to have, you know, two votes that sort of separated between the metrics and the other considerations. Is there anyone else that has, from the board, that has questions or comments? Ms. Hauser, and then Ms. Smiley, and then Ms. Stevens?
I have several. And Ms. McKenzie, I, I thank you for pointing that out, because my interest from the Task Force was the metrics. And I think there's been a lot of conversation, and I even might say confusion, about what the best way to measure safety so that we can make a decision on how to go forward. And what I'm hearing is the data says that we look pretty good. But in my conversations, you know, and I've heard is that the data reflects conditions on the ground. We, as a community, have been good about wearing masks and social distancing and all those other things. And the proof of the pudding is in the eating. But the numbers will change. And I wonder, I know Dr. Ward, I think, is on here. And I wonder if Dr. Ward might comment on the metrics and how they might move? Because as a board member, my question is, what do we need to? You know, I think the Task Force's work is, is pretty much done, and I really, really appreciate the work. But I wonder, what do we have to keep an eye on moving forward as we consider moving to Plan B or however we move forward?
So, Ms. Hauser, I just, I really quickly want to say that I think it was my understanding that the Health Department was going to kind of speak to the metrics tonight. And that then Ms. Ward and, or Dr. Ward, excuse me, and Dr. Wilson, and possibly also Dr. Benjamin would be here tomorrow night to answer questions. Dr. Felder, maybe you can speak to that. I just don't know what the expectations around the Health Department. And I don't want any toes stepped on. So, if you can help guide us through this moment, that would be helpful.
It's, it's fine with me if someone from the Health Department can explain. But I really want to understand how, how the numbers could change. So, you know, the, the numbers go up and down. I wonder if we can understand how we need to be managing this.
I think you're exactly right. The numbers can definitely change. I mean, we have gotten to these low trends, which is where we wanted to be because of all of the behavior changes that are. because of all of the behavior changes that our community has made. As long as we can continue to keep them that way, then I think our measures will remain low. We've talked about going into holiday seasons. We know people like to congregate. In Orange County, we haven't seen large spikes in cases around Labor Day, and that's telling to me. That says again that our community is practicing those safe methods. So if we can continue to push that public message out and monitor ourselves and support our friends and our families in those same practices, then I think we can keep our numbers lower. But, I mean, we've talked before too that we are not in isolation, that people come from other counties, especially around the holidays, people travel. So I think we just have to be prepared for what you do when the numbers could change.
Can I just, a quick follow-up?
Sure.
So if I think, you know, I think we're expecting the governor to put the state into Phase 3 shortly, and some school districts appear to be getting ready to open. And how might those events change the numbers or affect the numbers?
I think a lot of it will depend on what Dr. Benjamin said. We know what we need to do in order to prevent the spread of COVID-19, and as long as everyone who's going back into public with a reopening into Phase 3, going back to restaurant, it's going to depend.
Ms. Stay up next? I think I was. Okay.
Yes, I think.
Great. Okay, so first, just a comment, which, especially that percent positive trend is really, really promising, and I hope that we're able to keep it down there rather than sort of hovering around the 5% down here, 3%, 2%. The lower that gets, the better, I feel. Just one comment on the task force's role, or maybe two. One is just that the, as I'm the board representative on the task force, I did not vote in that vote, though. The role of the task force is going to continue all year and continue monitoring those numbers in order to make a different recommendation to the board potentially at some other point. So just in terms of their work being done, perhaps around this particular decision, but generally, the expectation is that that group's going to continue meeting. I also expected that group's charge to be much more around the metrics themselves rather than the other things. And so I appreciated that that was some of what the conversation was about. Just an observation as somebody who was there that a lot of that discussion was around people just raising a lot of questions, a lot of unknowns. This is, you know, staff members and community members about, will there be enough PPE? Well, what would be the procedures be if someone were sick? And some of those things, I think, we do or will soon have answers to. But I, so I think if the group is going to engage in decision-making that involves those kinds of things, I think it would be helpful for us to devote even more time to that activity in getting even deeper into those things with the group. And then, those were the comments. The question is, I saw that the state recently just started reporting these new antigen tests in the test results, and I'm wondering if you all have thoughts about how that might impact any of the metrics that we're tracking and whether it should impact, yeah, whether you expect that to affect any of those?
That's a great question. I'm not sure we know quite yet. We have very few antigen results so far. They've only just started including them. So I think we just have to watch. I do know that we rely more heavily on the PCR tests in term, because of their sensitivity and their accuracy rates. And luckily, the state continues to share those results with us in addition to the antigen and to publicly present them on the state's website. So even you yourself can go onto the state's website and look more closely at those PCR tests.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Stevens, did you have a question?
No, no. Mine is a comment. Madam Chair, you thanked the ladies from the Health Department, but I just wanted to give a big thank you to Rebecca Crawford, as she is a product of Orange County Schools. And we are very proud of her and all of the work that she's doing. So kudos to you, Area Commander.
Thank you.
Mr. Atherton?
So I do share concerns as other board members about this task force giving recommendations from the community, especially when we have, you know, our staff that's doing surveys. We're getting calls, and, you know, now the community's going to have a third source they need to talk to to go tell them how they think. I think that's too much on our community, especially our teachers and staff and others. But I did have a question around the six abstains. That seems rather high in a vote. Can anybody provide context on why the abstains, they just didn't feel comfortable voting yes?
I'm assuming you didn't feel, well, all of our abstains were from staff members. And while I have the floor, I do want to mention that, for the most part, the committee was in agreement that the metrics is going in the right direction.
Okay.
And most of those abstains, even to get a little bit more specific, I think most of them were even cabinet members. So not necessarily like a teacher assistant or a teacher. So that's generally who I saw abstaining.
Yeah, that helps in the context because there's no contacts, and that makes sense that they're abstaining. Thank you.
Any other board members?
I'm sorry, Hillary, one.
Okay.
Will the Health Department continue to give us, to report back to us on these metrics? So do we have a, an agreement that we stay, we'll just, they'll just stay on top of it and keep us informed?
We are scheduled to come back annually monthly, as long as you would like this to come.
Okay, so I guess I'm interested in if there's a change, you know, to get an early warning from you. So we'd love you to come back monthly, but I wonder if we're going to get like a report every week on how the numbers are doing?
We, all of our metrics are posted on our website, and we can make sure that you have access to that link. And so at any time, any day, you can go in to see how our metrics are looking too.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you so much, Ms. Crawford. If I could also add that the Health Department's metrics are on our website as well. So they've given us full access to their dashboard. We have the exact dashboard. It's automatically updated as the Health Department, so you can go to either site. Yeah, and you should see the same thing. Sure. Any other questions at this time?
I don't see any, Dr. Felder.
Okay, well, again, I too echo the sentiments regarding the Health Department. We cannot do this work without them, and they have been incredibly helpful to the district. So thank you to Ms. Crawford, whom I did not know. She kept that a secret, that she is a former student. That's awesome, and to, of course, to Ms. Stewart. And so, all right, so we're going to go into the last item in this set, and then we have the approval for the final budget. But the next item is the Plan B readiness matrix. So I will actually let Dr. Dawson, who's going to lead this part of the meeting, provide you with the purpose, et cetera, for the district having this matrix and how we're using it, Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, Dr. Felder, and good evening, Chair McKenzie and Vice Chair Stevens. I just want to start by saying that what Dr. Felder has always said, right, that there is no substitution for in-person instruction. And our aim is and always has been to return all students and staff back to school in person safely. Therefore, we've always been preparing our schools since before the start of school to make sure that our district, our schools, school buildings, and that our staff are ready to receive our students back in our buildings. And to assist with us, we created this Plan B readiness matrix. And the purpose, again, to just ensure that the district is prepared to transition to Plan B for when that timeline is to be determined. And we know that at some point, we are going to have to return. We want our children to return. But yes, safety of our children and our staff have always been at the forefront. And so what this matrix is, is a list from each department of what needs to be in place before staff and students can return to school in person again safely. And, you know, not knowing the exact date for when this transition would come, we set some preliminary deadlines of our own to make sure that we were ready. And the categories that you will see when I share the matrix with you for this readiness was our gauge of ready, somewhat ready, not ready, and ongoing. And, oops, sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, now I'm having, there we go. Sorry, I'm presenting and I'm speaking, so pardon me. So the categories for ready, when an item is indicating that we're ready, it means that we're complete. All orders are in, everything's been set and done. Somewhat ready implies that our team is still in the process of completing with expected completion dates. Orders might be in, but we haven't maybe received the orders yet. Or maybe that we've started the training, but we haven't completed all training yet, but it's in the process. And somewhat ready would imply that, you know, we do have a completion date. If it's not ready, it just implies that the task that we are needing to complete is outside of our realm of control. So for instance, bus routes, like we're unable to complete the bus routes yet until we finalize, and our families have had a chance to receive more information and determine, yes, I'm returning my child in person, or no, I want my child to continue 100% remotely in the virtual academy. Or, one hot topic that we've been talking about are our student devices. That would be not ready, because that is something that we have not yet received from our vendors when the expected delivery date is. So when you see a couple of those items that are indicated in red as not ready, it's those types of instances. Again, but again, we can start school in Plan B should we have to without the student devices. That's something we can do. And, you know, if, once we know who's coming back in person and in remote, the bus routes, those will be completed. And therefore, these are not hindrances to us having to return to Plan B should the board decide to do so. So I just want to share with you so you can kind of view what this matrix looks like. And so it's a checklist, right, that's kind of just helping the district to see. I'm just going to leave it in this view, so it's cleaner view, it's a little bit quicker. So that you can see here checklist from our different departments, from our transportation category, again, complete, in process, just those couple needing a data before they can finish. And then our facilities, we have isolation room, devices, everything that's been ordered. If you see some things that are ordered but not in yet, as of course, you know, some of the things have been backordered, even though we've ordered them months before, but they're on their way, and we're expecting them here. As you can see, we do have PPE that is stocked and ready. And should we, were we to open school within two weeks, we would be ready to do that. We have all the necessary PPEs that we need to do so stocked and ready. Are we continuing to order more? Of course, we're staying two to three months ahead of our equipment and supplies to make sure that we're ready. And as you can see, we've set some preliminary timelines just for ourselves because we wanted to make sure that we're ready for whenever this transition time comes. We knew when we launched Plan C that this was a nine-week look, so we were making sure that we were in that timeline. And a lot of, you know, these items that you're seeing is for our safety. Trainings, you know, those are all in process. Our meals. You can see here in just communication, or how are we communicating with our families? We just got some surveys back, so that's complete. At the time that we were doing this, our family survey wasn't complete because, again, we closed unofficially late this afternoon. Curriculum and instruction, that also has been, you know, a major focus for us because we know that Plan B entails synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And so we wanted to make sure that we are creating instructional model strategies for our teachers so that they can be ready, and we are continuing to do that work. And we look forward to sharing more details with you on that tomorrow. Then, as you can see, we're taking into consideration what will this mean as we transition to Plan B for our different learners. And we have special education, we have our preschoolers. And as you can see, a lot of it in process, but with the completion timeline for us when we will be completely ready. And our schools, we are still finishing up, but it's almost done, our marking up of our school buildings as far as helping to social distance, the directional signage, you know, trainings at schools. Those are all in place and being completed, and will be completed within October. And then, of course, human resources. I know that one of the requests that came up was a particular breakdown of how our teachers in particular are looking to return to school or, you know, any ADA accommodation requests. Those are all things that are complete, ongoing, for some things that, no matter what plan we're in, they're always being determined, right? So that's where some of the ongoing issues, items that you will see. And then, as referenced earlier in my opening, talking about technology, our new teacher devices, while delayed, I'm just waiting for a delivery date, but I did receive word that it will be in October, and I didn't want to set an exact date, but it's sooner than later in October. And then, the only one that's really challenging that we're all aware of due to our previous manufacturer being placed on the entity list is the delay in our student devices. But flat panels are all up in our classrooms, the technology that will allow teachers to work, project their screen and work wirelessly, this Miracast software that has been installed. Hotspots, of course, have been ordered. We're waiting for the budget approval, hopefully, tonight so that we can order the docking stations and second monitors for our teachers, which are already in the process of going. So when we talk about readiness, we are ready. And this is our document that we're continuing to help guide our readiness. So we're happy to share that with you. And at this time, if there are any questions?
Mr. Atherton, and then Ms. Doyle?
So first, thank you so much for all the work you and the staff and Cabinet and everybody's doing to, you know, try to give us some visual indicators of things that are being done so people understand the magnitude of the work that everybody's trying to do to look at this. Just a couple of comments that caught my eye when I reviewed this. So on the first page, it says, "General letter generating to notify families of a student being transported on their child's bus without a face covering." How can that happen? If we're checking temperatures and the students walking on the bus, I would think we would have temporary mask and say, you know, you don't wear it, you can't get on the bus. I, that one just surprises me because we do have students, you know, that are on a bus over an hour just because of physics, right, of where it's coming in. So that one concerns me that we would ever have a scenario like that. I just, just a concern. The second one is, and I think this drives some of the confusion, is under special education, it says PPE for classrooms in process. But we said we do have all our PPE for two months. So does that mean we don't have it for certain classrooms, or does this additional? So just some confusion on, I know there's a lot of community concern about PPE, and do we actually have it? And then the last comment question I had was the delivery dates. I know you said that some had been pushed back or ordered. I guess some confidence would help if we knew when it was ordered. Like, was it ordered in March and it kept getting? Like was it ordered in March and it kept getting pushed back? And now we have a 10, 15 dates, our confidence may not be as high. Or, you know, are all these recent and none of these have been pushed back? And these are just new orders? Sorry for all the questions.
It's okay. Mr. Atherson, I'm going to ask Mr. Pitt to help answer some of your questions regarding PPE.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Pitts?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Atherton, to answer your question regarding PPE for classrooms in EC setting, the reason, sorry, let me pull my screen down a little bit. The reason it's in process is because we have the PPE in the district. So it is physically onsite. We just don't know the true need of those spaces, so it hasn't been conveyed. As soon as we can get the information of everything that is needed, we will get all of that to those sites and set up. So I have been working or and I will be working with Ms. Krimmons to make sure that we get everything we need. But it's just determining the actual need of those sites and how those spaces are going to be utilized. As some of those spaces are changing due to the population in the buildings and the fact that we may need to adjust some of our rooms.
Okay, that's, that's excellent. So that date isn't an indication of the equipment arriving. It's the evaluation of what's needed.
For that particular item, I would say yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And to answer your question of some of the other PPE, some of it has been backordered and it was ordered quite a while ago and we have been constantly assessing that. And as we hear from our vendors, like we just heard from the hand sanitizer vendor that the cartridges that we ordered to go in are on backorder again. So to negate those not being ordered, we're just going to go ahead and order pump bottles and we've been in the process of doing that. So we are constantly changing what we are ordering dependent on what we are being told by our vendors. So our game plan is constantly changing to ensure that we will have absolutely everything we need prior to the building's opening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Other questions? Ms. Moore, the other Ms. Hauser?
I have a couple. First, thank you. This is overwhelming.
Ms. Hauser, excuse me, Ms. Hauser. I'm sorry, I had recognized Ms. Moore before you. We'll be right back to you. Sorry. Ms. Moore?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Dr. Dawson and the team for compiling this data together. It's very helpful. I really have more of a comment. And this is in regards to EC. So staff that have reached out to me, they basically want to, they want reassurance that everything is in place as far as PPE things that will set them up for success in the classroom. So some concerns are one-to-one, face-to-face contact. Some students requiring assistance with feeding, feeding tubes, hand-over-hand assistance, changing of sole clothing, underwear or diapers that require a thorough cleaning. They're concerned about that. Also concerned in the event of a crisis as a last resort, they may have to use a therapeutic crisis hold. And so that's very hand-on-hand, you know, face-to-face. And that's only used in the event if a student is presenting self-inflicted behavior or danger to the classmates. And the last one concerns students, some students are runners. So staff will have to be within close proximity because one second, you know, you can have a student who has ran off. So those were concerns for EC. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Connie Krimmons to help respond to those concerns. And before we do, I just wanted to also just note in there that while we have this district level readiness matrix, each school will have their own readiness matrix similar to this, which because as we know, some of these EC classes are particular to certain schools. And so they will include that preparedness in their matrix. But Ms. Connie Krimmons, if you wouldn't mind feeling some of these questions, please?
We can't hear you, Ms. Krimmons.
With regards to PPE, as Ms. Pitt stated, that will be in the classrooms and all staff will be trained on how to use that. We are provide, we will provide handwritten procedures on every skilled procedure that has to be done so that staff is safe. We have been working closely with Nash Rocky Mount Public School System, who has brought their separate settings back. For students who exhibit behaviors and runners, those will be case-by-case conversations with parents. I can't promise that those students won't come back because they are entitled to free and appropriate public education. But certainly those are conversations to be held with parents because it's not just keeping staff safe, but the utmost, our focus is on students and keeping students safe. So, you know, I talked with staff on Friday. We had an all-staff meeting and I assured them that all things will be ready to go and they will be trained. And if we are uncomfortable, then we will reset and move forward from there. But we will be comfortable. We've been working with staff throughout this whole process. So I feel that the plan that we will have and ready to go will address the needs and concerns of staff and parents and students. Thank you, Ms. Krimmons. Thank you. Ms. Hauser?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Dawson, I'm happy to hear that you're doing a readiness by school because it seems to me that, you know, Hillsborough Elementary might be ready. F1 Cheeks is not, right? And we need, so will it be possible for us to see what that looks like? And, and I would love to see as part of that, what are target dates for having teachers trained on how to use it? Are we going to run a trial, do a trial run in any of these schools? I mean, even kind of, I listened to the conversation tonight about the survey of teachers and families. How, you know, what does the option B look like for that school? How many families want to come? Do we have enough teachers to teach them? Where are the gaps? So, so these seem to be transportation. You know, you could have transportation for one school but not have it worked out for others. And, and those needs might vary by school. So it seems to me that, that that's, it's for us to be ready, the schools have to be ready. So that will be, I really would love to see how you're looking at the readiness for the schools.
We definitely will update the board on that, the school teams. You know, they started, we have our district level team that's ready to go out and support the schools in preparing these, you know, their readiness matrix, matrices for their individual schools. And, you know, right now, they've been really focusing on, of course, doing, launching and implementing Plan C well. And so of course, you know, if we know that we need to transition to Plan B, we will go deeper into that. But as far as, you know, district support, schools are, you know, they've already started those conversations. So we'll share definitely once we get that ready. I don't see any further questions. Okay, well, of course, you know, we're always available should questions come up. And I just want to encourage our community that again, this will be a community effort. And it will take all of us to keep each other safe. So we continue to ask all of our community members and our families to please continue to wear the mask, wash our hands. Now I would like to end the presentation to Ms. Raff for the next action item, if there aren't any other items or comments.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dawson. We do, I believe, have a couple of public comments before we move into the budget presentation. So we will do that and then we'll be right with you, Ms. Raff. Thank you so much. Ms. Stowe, if you could please recognize our two speakers and we will hear them now.
Thank you, Chairman McKenzie. The first speaker is Lori Bateman. And she is on the call, Jo, to unmute.
Can you hear me okay?
We sure can. You're on, Ms. Bateman. You've got three minutes. Thank you so much.
Great. So a couple of, three different comments. Like many other families, my family chose the Virtual Academy back in July based on the idea that it would offer a new and different curriculum based on individual metrics and abilities, also described as a personalized learning opportunity. For many, including myself, the idea of consistency, regardless of what was decided in the future quarters was key. It gave me, the parent, the feeling that I was the one in control of what my child would experience during what would surely be a different and difficult school year. The idea that the assigned teacher would remain consistent was appealing as well, minimizing the difficult adjustments and changes that may come. Comment and question primarily revolves around Virtual Academy and confusion as to why it seems that what was originally described and presented is no longer the case. I'd like a clear and concise understanding as to what exactly the Virtual Academy is now and what the 400K was actually spent on. And clarity as to whether it was software that is now only being used as a state curriculum supplement if teachers choose to use it. And if so, why are more people not concerned about this? Second comment is around the surveys. I would suggest you send the survey out again after tonight's informative presentation, presentation given by an educated and experienced expert. And lastly, the metric task force. Thank you for your work. It would be helpful to understand who the members of the metrics task force are and what the member selection process was and when was their vote added as a part of their charge versus just presenting the four agreed-upon metrics. As many of the board members mentioned, I think it's concerning that it wasn't transparent that their voting was going to be a part of their responsibility. And again, definitely interested in understanding how that task force was selected. And thanks for the opportunity to comment on those things. And yes, I talked fast on purpose so I could get it all out.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bateman. I think that lots of questions about the Virtual Academy will be part of the presentation for tomorrow. And I will definitely email you and we can talk more about some of your other questions.
Ms. Stowe, could you please recognize the next speaker?
Yes, the next and final speaker is Tamika Ward Satterfield. And she's on the call.
Good evening. I am Tamika Ward Satterfield. And I would first like to state our sincere gratitude for all of the faculty and administration of Orange High School, the district leadership and the school board. Going through this pandemic has truly been terrible for us all. And we know that our school board has an increased responsibility for all the young people of our community, in addition to your own personal health, livelihoods and families. I acknowledge the decision that you have to make tonight and tomorrow will be one of the most difficult that you have to make during your tenure as a board member. I argue that it is even more difficult than the decision you've made of how to begin the school year. I also acknowledge that there is no clearly right or clearly wrong answer. And no matter what decision you make, you will likely upset a substantial percentage of the community. I trust that you will check your own biases and political opinions during the discussion and rely on the medical and scientific advice that you have been given. I trust that you will be intentional about considering the effects of your decision on those students and families that are not represented by public comment speakers or survey completers. Like many in the community, I am worried about the loss of instructional time and content that every child has experienced during this pandemic. I acknowledge that the negative effects of these losses will be felt for years to come. I am worried that the hybrid model will cause our teachers to have to choose between their personal health and safety and their livelihoods. I am worried about the pressure our faculty may be feeling to be heroes and return to the building. I am worried that a transition to hybrid learning at this time will create confusion as faculty and administration try to create structures to balance remote and in-person learners at the same time. Now we have the benefit of being all in the same boat, rowing in the same direction. I worry that the hybrid model will prioritize one type of learner over another. I am worried that schools will not be able to effectively provide qualified substitutes in the likely event that the highly qualified teacher has to miss class time. I am worried that our community does not share a common belief in the value of wearing masks in public. And this will create tough situations for our faculty, staff, administrators and students to navigate. With the information that our family has now, we will not be sending our son back to in-person learn. I am grateful that you have a clear set of metrics guiding your decision of whether or not to allow in-person learning at this time. I am grateful for the recommendation of the metrics task force. I trust that you will have a robust discussion before making this decision and will commit to reevaluating your decision at regular intervals. Again, thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ward Satterfield. So now we will move on to our final agenda item, which is the final 2020, 2021 district budget. Ms. Raff?
Yes, hi. And community members listening in this evening. At our last board meeting, we presented a final 2020, 2021 budget for discussion and review. So before you tonight, if I move through this quickly, I apologize. But I know a lot of this data that is going to be before you, you've already seen. But if you need to, you know how to stop me and we will answer any questions necessary. So if we could please go to the next slide. A few highlights for this budget. Wanted to point out that on June the 22nd, the board approved an interim appropriation budget. That was a budget. Continue operating until a final budget was approved. On June the 30th, when we closed out our books, we recognized and realized approximately $1.2 million in savings due to the school closure last March. So $1.2 million was added back into our fund balance. On July the 1st of 2020, $2.1 million were released to Orange County Schools from the coronavirus relief funds. Those are the funds that we received either from the CARES Act or the governor's coronavirus relief funds. To date, we have spent approximately 60% of those funds, of which approximately that same percentage actually expire on December the 30th of this fiscal year. One other thing I want to point out that we talked about last board meeting as well as with our joint meeting with the commissioners, is that for the July-September time period, we have had a substantial increase in expenditures to open in Plan C. Primarily those were around technology. We've actually spent roughly $950,000 that were not funded as a result of either previous budget or COVID relief funds in support of technology. One thing I do want to point out, this budget does not reflect transitioning to Plan B or to Plan A. This budget is based upon what we know at this time. And as the board decides what that transition plan will be, we will bring back budget amendments to adjust the budgets as are needed. Next slide, please. This next slide will look familiar to you. This is just a snap, this is an overview of how our budget and operating in regards to the areas that we are receiving the funds. We have a total operating budget of $95.2 million that is broken down into the various categories that you see here. Do want to point out, it was brought up at the last time that we had this discussion, that those areas with the asterix, those represent the total cost for each of those areas, which do include persons. So I want to just reiterate that this budget's each daily, $7,380 as well as charter students of 885. The $7,300 The $7,381 is what the Department of Public Instruction has forecasted for our district to be for this fiscal year. And 885 charter students is what our actual numbers were at the end of last fiscal year. Next slide, please. This slide is a look at our preparatory fund. So break down to show what the budget is as well as any fund balance that may have been appropriated in the fund. Just want to reiterate again that the school-community relations fund balance, that preparatory fund balance, is what is designated to fund the Phase Two of the student learning labs at the $72,000, which is the projected cost of that through January of 2021. And the budget that is there for the Phase Three, that budget is a placeholder because we will be having to pay staff as a result of manning that. But it is anticipated that the Department of Social Services subsidies will cover that cost totally. So there will not be a fund balance impact as a result of that. So that gets our total preparatory enterprise budget to $35.7 million. Next slide, please. A few things that just want to talk about or point out in regards to concerns for the upcoming budget seizing, is the increased recurring expenditures and being able to sustain those in future years. For example, the hotspot service agreements. Those costs are being $15 a month for our 1,500 hotspots. And when you factor that out over 12 months, we have a substantial cost, it's roughly $100,000 that we will be looking at sustaining going forward as long as we utilize the hotspot. Because I, I am of the belief that virtual remote learning will not be going away anytime in the near future. The increased cost associated with transitioning to Plan B or to Plan A. And also, another concern that I have at this moment is our average daily membership not recovering to our pre-COVID-19 numbers. The budget impacts as a result of that were waived by the General Assembly for this fiscal year only. So I am concerned if we're not able to get those students back. It will result in state funding. Next slide, please. Finally, for your approval tonight is $130.8 million. This does include an additional fund balance appropriation for the staff docking stations as well as the $273,000 that is the shortfall from our county appropriation per pupil funding that we need to balance the budget. And just to point out again, as I had said, that this does not include the items that you see listed there that have been discussed as potential expenditures associated with opening in Plan B. That is all I have to share with you this evening. And if there are any questions, I will be happy to entertain those.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Raff? Ms. Hauser?
I, I just want to thank you because it's hard to have questions because everything is really clear. Great job, Rhonda. Ms. Raff, thank you so much. I just, just to clarify, if you could put your last slide up, that we've spent about three, almost $400,000 in this fund balance, but we've added over a million, we've added to the fund balance. So on a net, net basis, our fund balance is growing. So that's helpful. I think you said the budget is based on kind of pre-COVID world, right? The budget was built from the pre-COVID world. What, have we made any provisions or do we have any placeholder in the budget for instructional support that we're going to need? And, and maybe it's too early, I know everybody is trying to figure out how to reopen schools, but we know that we're going to need support to our kids to get them through the challenges of this environment. I wonder if there's any process to put a placeholder in the budget? We have any idea what that might be? You know, is it hundreds of thousands, a million dollars? Any idea what that might be?
I appreciate the question and you are that need there and we are going to make sure that that need is addressed for all students. At the $200,000 that went down to us from the state that is directly specified for that specific purpose. And we are currently planning the, the contract and the negotiation as a result to utilize those dollars first. And as we begin to assess the plans for transition and determining how we're going to transition into Plan B or whatever our next steps are, we will be continually looking at those. And as those needs arise, we will be bringing those back to the board for placeholders to be approved and designated for those specific purposes.
Ms. Raff? Are there any other comments or questions or do I have a motion to approve the budget?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Our budget is unanimously approved. Thank you, everyone, so very much. Dr. Felder, do you have any, any closing comments before we adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. Just want to say thank you to everyone who presented tonight. Thank you, board, for your queries and your comments. Greatly appreciated and we look forward to presenting again tomorrow night.
Yep, I just want to echo Dr. Felder. Thanks to staff for the tremendous amount of work that went into preparing for this evening's presentations. I know it was no small lift. Thank you, staff, administrators, teachers and the community for listening in tonight. It's really a joy to see hundreds of people watching our work. And finally, wash our hands, wear your mask, wait six feet apart. We'll see you tomorrow night at 5:00. Thanks, everyone. Good night. Meeting's adjourned. Do I have to vote?
I think we need a motion.
I have a motion for adjournment, sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Smiley and a second for Mr. Atherton. Sorry about that, everybody. I got excited. We finish before 10:00, it's so unusual. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Meeting is adjourned for real this time. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.